All right, good evening and welcome to the August 23rd, 2021, City of Helena City Commission Meeting. Thank you for participating in the City of Helena's Commission Meeting. We're pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's efforts to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we experience technical, we may experience technical difficulties during this meeting. We welcome your public commentary and please read, please read the tips and guidelines if you're viewing from home on app usage and participation. If you're viewing online, you're going to enter the meeting automatically muted. Closed captioning can be utilized by tapping the live transcription button down the Zoom toolbar. I'll call for public commentary after each action item on the agenda. You'll be unmuted when acknowledged by either myself or the clerk of the commission. If you're unable to use the raised hand feature, feel free to offer public commentary using either the question and answer feature or the chat feature. Questions will be recorded but not necessarily answered directly. If you are a phone-in listener, you can press star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute or unmute. If you're offering public commentary, please identify yourself with your first name and last name. At the end of the meeting, there's a general public commentary agenda item. You may use this time to speak on any item that was not listed on the agenda. If you need any assistance using the software, please refer to the link that appears on the screen. Madam Clerk, will you take the role, please?
City Attorney Joden.
Here.
City Manager Harlow Schulk.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Here.
Mayor Protem Halliday.
Here.
And for the rector, record, Mayor Protem, Mayor Collins will be in attendance. He will just be a few minutes late.
Okay, please rise at me and stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The regular commission meeting minutes, April 19th, 2021, is there anything we need to do with that, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protem, I believe unless any member of the commission has any edits or any changes to the minutes, then I would ask that they be approved.
Okay. If anybody has any speak now, or we're going to deem them approved? Okie dokie, they are approved. That brings us to board appointments. Commissioners, I think we got circulated quite an extensive packet and recommendations for board appointments this evening. Any discussion or questions? Not seeing any. I had one maybe for the manager or the clerk. I saw that we have one on there for the airport board, which I know that we're essentially currently in some sort of negotiations with. Do we know if we did any sort of vetting or discussion about whether, you know, this city's representative is someone who's representing the, the sort of city and airport's interest in a continued symbiotic relationship? Or if we're appointing someone who's going to continue sort of the adversarial stance that the airport has taken with regard to the payment of assessments?
I'll go ahead and start. Commissioner and Mayor Protem, the appointment of this person to the board did not receive a review by that by, without analysis by my office. In response to that, Mayor Protem, commissioners, as you, I'm sure are aware, the appointment of the boards is a recommendation by the mayor. He reviews applications and then this application was brought forward to you at the administrative meeting for discussion at that time. It was not my understanding, I, this was last week, that there was any objection to the appointment at that time.
No, and I apologize, I wasn't there and I wasn't stating an objection, I was just curious. I mean, we've had that question before of appointing people to board to take adversarial positions to the city in general. I just didn't know if that had been a discussion or come up since I wasn't at that meeting.
None that I'm aware of, no. Commissioner, Mayor Protem.
If I may, Mayor Protem, I'm not aware of any reason that the city would have a concern over this appointment.
Well then, a motion if anybody wants to make one.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I will move the appointment of Bob Hibberly to an interim appointment on the Helena Airport Authority Commission. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on September 1st, 2022. Appointment of Tracy Eagleline to the, to a first term on the Board of Adjustments. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on August 31st, 2024. The appointment of Michael McCabe to a first term on the City County Consolidated Planning Board as a city representative. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on September 1st, 2024. The appointment of Alyssa Sorensen to an interim appointment on the City Zoning Commission. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on September 30th, 2023. The appointment of Sean Morrison to an interim appointment on the Helena Business Improvement District. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on October 31st, 2023. The appointment of Judy Nielsen to an unexpired term on the Helena Housing Authority. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on August 1st, 2026. Appointment of David Briganti to a second term on the Helena Housing Authority as a resident representative. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on August 1st, 2023. Appointment of Lise Zubrin-Giro to a second term on the Helena Housing Authority as a housing commissioner. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on August 1st, 2026. The appointment of Grant Jackson to a first term on the Helena Open Lands Management Advisory Committee. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on June 30th, 2024. The appointment of Maxwell Hay to an interim appointment on the Helena Public Arts Committee. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on December 31st, 2022. The appointment of Helen Paulson to an interim appointment on the Helena Public Arts Committee. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on December 31st, 2023. And the appointment of Megan Harrington to an interim appointment on the Helena Public Arts Committee. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on December 31st, 2023. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Halliday.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Great, that brings us to the consent agenda. Item A, claims, and B, adoption of the official zoning map. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'd like to request you introduce and entertain a motion to adopt on consent the claims paid on July 20th, July 23rd, and July 30th in the amount totaling $2,386,017.95 as well. Entertain a motion to adopt on consent the revision to the official zoning map. The zoning map was last adopted in 2019 and this brings to current all of the amendments that have already come before the commission. There are no surprise amendments within this zoning map. This just revises a, the compilation of all zoning changes and revisions within the city since the last adoption in 2019, in December of 2019. Thank you.
Commissioners, anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda or have any questions? Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion. I'll go ahead and move the consent agenda, item A, claims, and item B, adoption of the official zoning map for the City of Helena with a revision date of August 31st, 2021.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any public comment on these items?
Mayor Protem, I have no hands raised online. I have no written public comment and it appears no one in chambers is here to make public comment on these items.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Halliday.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Great, that brings us to communications and proposals from commissioners. Anything this evening from the commission? Not seeing anything, so move on to the report of the city attorney.
Mayor Protem, nothing to report this evening.
Okay, thank you. To the report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a couple of items. Just wanted to make sure that the commission was aware that through January 18th of 2022, Transportation Secretary, the Transportation Security Administration has revised and extended its mask-wearing requirements on public transit. So want to make sure that everyone is aware that until January 18th of 2022, masks will be required within our Capitol Transit bus system. And I believe that brings us to an update on projects that was requested by Commissioner O'Loughlin. And these three project updates include Rodney Street, Benton, and Euclid. And Director Leland is here to provide that update.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, commissioners. First, I want to, we'll go over quickly that our team has developed a project map that is out on the website now that is going to be a very useful tool. And I want to thank Jake Garson, Haley Treckey, and Scott Razanoff for developing this map. It is really something that we've been wanting for a while and they were able to take it and get it across the finish line. It brings in all our different projects at the different stages and you can click on it. It's interactive and it sort of gives you an update of what the project is, where it is, who's designing it, and then to be able to go forward. And then with that, if we can get it, once we get it up there, we can actually take a look at it. But to go over some of the major projects that we have is Rodney Street. That's one everyone is looking at and going forward, it's going fairly well. We have part of it, the first half, already paved and curbing gutter. We still need to do a lot of the landscaping, but that portion is done. Then the second half, the upper towards Rodney Street from Sixth to Rodney, is under construction with the utilities and we are looking to have that project done, completed in October 15th or around that time, middle of October. The west side, we are finishing up paving of Phase Two and, but that is going to go on winter shutdown because of the lift station that is going to be required. We just cannot get any pumps at this time and any of the mechanical stuff. It's 12, 13 weeks out, so we just, we're at the mercy of the shipping industry right now and the manufacturing, so it's probably not going to start up till early next spring to get that lift station in line. But the rest of it will be completed and except for portion of Phase Two, it'll be operational to be able to move forward. Other items that are out there is the Hare Street Storm Sewer that was by the Capitol and then over by Bryant School. We were replacing and upsizing some of our older mains and so we were able to, to get that completed. We are doing some influence valve and some valve work at the Missouri River Plant once that shuts down. Lawrence and Warren, pretty much everything on the hard surface is complete. We are just doing the landscaping there and then the striping will be done. It'll take about two weeks and it'll be done one week before school, so that'll be a good project to get done. We're still figuring out the funding and design for Knight Street and the Sixth Warren Sidewalk. The contracts have been signed and then we're going to look at getting the project started. I can go on and on with a whole bunch of different projects. We have filter projects on the Missouri River Plant. We have groundwater wells. We have chip seal. We have Chessman Dam manholes. So I could go through the whole, all our projects that are out there, but in time, if you have any specific comments, then I can go through them. But this is our interactive map that you can go and take a look at. And this one is the Neo Intersection. It was completed in 2020, 13. It has a lot of information to try and come up with when the project was actually completed the year before, so people have those questions and know how much the money was. And then the blue is for studies that we are completed, like the Five Point Intersection. And then we can zoom out and go to Rodney Street and it's under construction. We're looking at October and gives you a quick overview of what the project is and who it's going, who you can contact if you need further information. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have or...
Thank you, Director. Just two questions. Benton and Euclid, I'm sorry if I missed an update on Benton and Euclid. Could you quickly just summarize to what's...
Oh, Benton and, yep, I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot that one. Benton and Euclid, the project, all the hard paving is done. We had to put the concrete and we have to wait for it to cure. And so it's going to be another week before the striping is in, but it is operational and working. The tar is actually working as the striping would and, but we will have the permanent striping done next week. And so that project will be essentially complete and then we will do the final payment, pay, payment on that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Leland?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I have one question. So as, as projects are coming online, are you all going to be adding them as they're budgeted or planned or do you have any idea of, you know, what the timeline is as to when projects start coming on to this and when they'll come off?
Mayor Protem, Commissioner, is the plan is, and this is a living document, and we're going to keep updating it, but the original proposal is going to be the previous year, we will leave them on for completing to the previous year, then take it off. And then once they become budgeted, we are going to put an overview on it of, of where the project is and then give you an update of in-design or where we are at. So we're just going to wait until it's budgeted to actually put it on there because that's when we consider it an actual project.
Mayor, I had, or Mayor Protem, I had one quick question.
Sure.
So, did you say that it's Phase Two of Rodney Street that is getting pushed to 2022?
Mayor Protem, Commissioner, we are doing the design and it's looking with the way the construction season is and the contractors, we are going to bid it this fall because I don't feel comfortable to try and bid this project right now. It's going to be too expensive, so we are going to push it till winter to bid it and then start construction in the spring.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure I heard that right. So could you, could you actually just scroll back in, zoom back into the description of Phase Two, which I think would be that? Okay, so it looks like it's still indicating that it's going to be completed fall of 2021. So I just want to make sure that that looks like maybe it needs to be updated so that the public, this is an awesome tool, so I just want to make sure that, that, that accurately reflects.
Mayor Protem, Commissioner, I apologize. That was just, that's a typo. We never were going to look at have it at 2021. I think it was a miscommunication on Phase One, so we will get that updated. This is a beta version, sort of, to go live and I see a few other errors that we just missed, like Kevin Harrington is still out there. So we are going to correct those within the week.
Any other questions for Mr. Leland? All right, thank you, Mr. Leland. Anything else from the city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There's nothing more at this time. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to communication from the Helena Citizens Council. Do we have a representative on this evening?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Protem and Commissioner. My name is Benjamin Kuiper. I am a representative of District Two of the Helena Citizens Council. So our next meeting will be this Wednesday, August 23rd at seven. The meeting will be held on Zoom and meetings open to the public. You can find the meeting info on our website, helanacitizenscouncil.com. So during this meeting, we will swear in the members who were appointed to fill vacant seats between the, the last election and now. We had quite a few people appointed, so we're going to do our oaths of office at that meeting. Additionally, we're pleased to have the City of Helena's Public Information Officer, Jacob Garson, as our guest speaker. So we'll continue to meet remotely via Zoom for the rest of the calendar year. Our executive team is in the process of securing an in-person venue for the start of 2022, but I believe a remote option will still remain in place. They'll keep you updated as the process unfolds. And that's all I have to report. Thank you so much, Mayor Protem and Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Kuiper. Commissioners, anything for Mr. Kuiper? All right, nothing. We will move on to our regular items. The first is item A, a resolution removing one street light. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This item is, I also want to make sure and you're aware that for all lighting district questions this evening, both City Attorney Joden are here as well as Director Danielson. In the case of this district lighting item, it is number 10A. And it is a resolution between the property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Rank, located at 510 West Lawrence Street, excuse me. And they worked with Northwestern Energy to resolve an issue on the brightness of a light in their, behind their home. And the light, and the best solution as discovered was to eliminate the nuisance and request Northwest Energy to remove it, which they have agreed to do. This removal of the light is in, is considered a minor modification to the Special Improvement Lighting District and the commission can consider the amendment with the proposal.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for the manager, the city attorney, or Director Danielson?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I do have a question. So on, on this one for the ranks, I know this, we had started getting emails and this had all started, I think, like well before the city manager even came to the city. And I'm, I know that they were very patient in trying to work through things and I'm wondering if there is a way we can contemplate a better process to expedite this kind of thing. I don't know if there's an answer to it, but I know that they've, you know, they were always very understanding and, and patient with things, but I think it's, this is coming to us like more than a year after we started hearing about it. And just curious if the city manager or others might have ideas about how we can maybe improve this kind of process moving forward.
Mayor Protem, would you like a...
Sure.
Okay. Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Dean. We, I'll, I'll go back and talk with the staff about the process itself. It does appear that because it was within a district and it has the support of Northwest Energy, that there was some work with them that they were doing, but I don't know how long that takes and will definitely want to come back around. I think overall on lighting districts, and I know that Director Danielson adds on her list, really this process and the number of districts we have and overall, that is one of the, the asks I've had of her this year after we complete the budget. It's one of the larger projects that she has on the list. But as part of that, I'll ask that she include a process review and working with the city attorney's office, see if we can't change some of that up to make it faster if we can.
Commissioners, any other questions? Hearing none, we will open public comment through any member of the public who wishes to comment on item 10A.
Mayor Protem, I have no hands raised online. I have no written public comment and it appears no one in chambers is here to speak on this item.
Okay, then we will close public comment. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I will move to approve a resolution removing one street light in the alley behind 510 West Lawrence Street from Special Improvement District Lighting, Special Improvement Lighting District number 362 in the City of Helena, Montana.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, actually, I do have a question. I wasn't sure if we would get any public comment, but, so I guess this question will be directed to the city staff. In removing a light, does it go through the same sort of public protest process? And then my second follow-up question is, you know, does the city weigh in, and perhaps this is really a question for Northwestern more than the city, but how do we weigh kind of the public safety component of removal of, of one specific street light within a
Thank you, Mr. ... The lighting district overall, the process itself and the protest process is run by our finance team along with the city attorney's office and Director Danielson can provide that update.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and commissioners. The, when there's a minor modification to a lighting district such as this one, a protest period is waived. It's not necessary. This particular light is being removed based on the petition received from the residents that are around the particular light. There were, I believe, six or seven persons that signed the petition. They originally worked with Northwestern Energy to try to resolve the brightness in the light. And I think that took some time for them to work with Northwestern Energy and at such time, they came to a resolution that it was not, there was no solution to the brightness coming into the backyard of the resident. And so that's what prompted the petition. We received that in our office in May and I'm now bringing it forward to the commission for consideration. So to answer your, your first question, the protest period is not necessary for a minor modification. In regards to the second question, as far as the, the public safety, I, I personally have not taken that into consideration. I know that the, the lighting districts can be petitioned and amended by the residents as well as the developers that requested create lighting districts. And I don't know that there's a process for public safety consideration in either adding or removing lights from a district.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have no other questions or comments.
All right, commissioners, any other questions? Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Halliday.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay, that brings us to item 10B, a resolution amending a special lighting district. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I would like also to point out that we actually think you might want to go ahead and move the next item until we can have a full commission in place, item 10C. We, if, if there were to be a... We, if, if there were to be a vote on Item ten C and the commission were to tie, we have to start the process all over. And the best thing and recommendation that we have for you on ten C until we have a full commission is to table this item for the next agenda. Or move it down when we believe the mayor may be on. So, getting to Item ten B, this resolution amends the special just, S I L D number two-twenty-five and adds in twenty-nine lights within the district. This lighting is at a cost, once added, will be part of a cost and of maintenance supply, electrical, in supplying of electrical energy as well as administration, which the property owners within that district will take on. It will add an additional fourteen thousand dollars per year or point zero, zero, zero-one-eight-one-three cents per square feet of property owned effective within the tax year, tax year 2021.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions on this agenda item? Seeing none, we will open public comment on Agenda Item ten B. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on Item ten B? Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protam, I have no hands raised, no written public comment, and no one in chambers here to make public comment on this item.
Okay, then we will close public comment on Item ten B. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor Protam, I'll make a motion. I would move to approve a resolution amending Resolution number two-zero-four-one-one that created Special Improvement Lighting District number two-two-five in the city of Helena, alter the boundaries of and add twenty-nine streetlights in S I L D number two-twenty-five.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Halliday?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
All right, that brings us to regular Item ten C, which the manager has recommended. We either delay to a subsequent agenda until a full five-member commission is present or we move it down in our agenda this evening. That's the three of y'all's pleasure.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I'm, I'm comfortable with moving it.
To another meeting or just down the agenda and we'll see if the mayor gets here?
I think maybe just down the agenda and if the mayor doesn't happen to get here by then, we can revisit it.
Anybody have a problem with just shifting this down? We'll just make it, we'll just move it past all the public hearings.
Sounds fine.
Okay, great. So, for anyone here for Item ten C, it's being adjusted. It'll appear after Item eleven B at this point. Sorry if you are on. We're just going to try to make sure that we can have a full commission of this agenda item. So, that'll bring us to public hearings. Item eleven A, a demolition permit for a garage at four-hundred Flowery. Madam Manager or Ms. Haugen?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Do have Director Hogan here from our community development team to discuss the demolition of a garage at four-hundred Flowery Street and that approval be contingent upon receipt of and review by the Helena and Lewis and Clark County Heritage Tourism Council of a revised site plan. Director Hogan?
Mayor Protam and Commissioners, this evening you have before you the consideration of a demolition permit for a garage at the four-hundred Flowery Street. If some of you may recall, it's been a while since we've had a demolition permit. But under Title III, I believe it's chapter fourteen or one of the chapters outlines the process whereby if a building is either primary or contributing to a historic district, then there is a formal process within the city that they must go through. Their process really quickly is, they first determine whether or not the property is contributing or primary. In the case, the Flowery address is a contributing property to the district, both the house and the garage. In that case, then they have to go in front of the historic, the Heritage Tourism Council to review their plans and to have them present their proposal in terms of that demolition and also looking at future plans for that particular piece of property. They have done that. They've been working with Pam Matardo from our Historic Preservation Office. It's unfortunate that Mr. Matardo cannot be here this evening. But she, her, she did send me, we corresponded prior to the meeting, and she is aware that we have recommended approval with those conditions. The Heritage Commission did meet, and they do have a recommendation. So, if the Commission approves this permit tonight, then the next step is that the Building Division will issue a demolition permit for this property. However, there are large modifications that need to be done to the current plan design. And those will have to be resubmitted to the Building Division because right now the older set of plans themselves have been submitted to the Building Division. So, those might, will be some revisions that will take place with regard to this. So, I don't know if I'm still. So, this is the location. Location is in terms of Flowery. And on the location of Flowery, it is a house and a garage. It's been there for quite a few times, if you read, quite a few years. If you read through the historic materials, it's been there. It is a cultivating property. And this is one of our oldest districts in the community, the Helena Historic District, and it has some more landmark buildings. Just quickly outline the process. The property owners again have been working with the Heritage Tourism Commission. They did have a hold a public hearing. The war, Mr., the property owners, both were in attendance, and they did hear some of the questions and concerns that the H T C had. And at the end of the hearing, the H T C is recommending to the Commission that they grant a demolition for a garage at four-hundred Flowery and that the approval be contingent upon receipt of and review by the Heritage Tourism Council of a revised site plan. And that would include the building plan itself. It's my understanding that the property owners may be online through Zoom and they may have an additional comment under public comment. But for now, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Here's a picture of what the elevation of what the completed project would be. The current garage does not have living quarters as designed and proposed by the property owner. They are looking to not only build the garage, but also have a living quarters above, thereby increasing the potential density of the lot. But that is allowed under the zoning and is a new addition of additional housing unit within the community and within this district. The recommended motion from staff is to approve the granting of a demolition for the garage at four-hundred Flowery and that the approval be contingent upon the receipt of and review by the Heritage, the Helena, Lewis and Clark County Heritage Tourism Council of a revised plan. Staff would be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this proposal.
So, thanks, Ms. Haugen. And I see the mayor is back at this point, so I will turn it over to Mayor Collins.
You won't be allowing me to take a breather, right? Do we have any comments or questions from the Commission on this resolution before we move forward? From the Commission?
I have a question for Ms. Haugen, maybe, or the city attorney just on process. I know we kind of dabbled with this before, I think with the house either up on sort of Adams or Howley area where this, something similar came up. The H T C sort of said, well, we're conditionally approving it, but we want to see the plans. And it was a little, a little clunky. The, the property owner was okay with sort of the general recommendations. But there was a question of how that approval process would really work and what if the property owner went back to the H T C and the H T C said, we don't like your plan, and does have to come back to the Commission again? So, just maybe walk us through what these sort of conditional plan resubmital processes look like? Because it's not clear to me how they've worked in the past.
So, I don't know, Mayor Protam, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioner Halliday. So, there were some specific things that the Heritage Commission identified during the course of the hearing. The property owners consented and agreed that those would be, they, they would be good revisions or revisions that would work with their long-term plans. If they're on the line, they can add to any additional information. One of the things that happens within the Heritage Tourism Commission when they set those recommendations or additional alterations to the building itself, there's no guarantee that they would be or would affect the, some building code provisions. So, that is why we have them submit the plans to them. But if it, we should find that the plans no longer would fit the building code, then we would work with both the Heritage Tourism Commission, the property owner, and the building code to revisit that proposal as part of that submission. We won't have, if the Commission sets this, and until we have a review from the Tourism Council and I have confirmation from that office that they have reviewed and tentatively approved, because technically they don't have the authority to approve a plan but recommend approval. But if that's the Commission's desire, we will view that as the approve, similar to an approval. Then they can submit their full plans back to the Building Division and then go ahead with the plan issuance and the construction. Right now, what is pending is just the demolition permit itself. So, I don't know if that answered your question, Commissioner Halliday?
Yeah, maybe, so maybe just to, the short sum up is if we approve this tonight under the form recommended, the plan will go back to the H T C at some point for a formal vote or meeting. And if that's approved, then the Commission won't see anything again, right? This will just go forward. But the H T C gets the final say based on our vote tonight. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, that process is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do you have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I do have one hand raised. I do believe this is Mr. Stevens, who is the applicant.
Go ahead, sir.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is Hannah Warhank and Dan Stevens. We're the property owners. And we just wanted, maybe we first could address Commissioner Halliday's question. We have made the suggested changes to the plans that the H T C recommended, and we passed them on to Pam Matardo and the H T C. Pam is going to recommend their approval to the H T C. And Tom O'Connell, who is the architect on the H T C, also is going to recommend approval. And they plan to meet on those tomorrow night.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Do you have any other comments from the public? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no other hands raised. I've received no written public comment online, and there appears to be no one in chambers to make public comment.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
Before we take a vote, I just wanted to briefly disclose that, and I've consulted with the city attorney, and that, and I've been advised that I do not need to recuse myself, but I wanted to provide full transparency that the applicant and the property is directly next door to a family member. And just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Notice ticking. So, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd move to approve the granting of a demolition for a garage at four-hundred Flowery Street and that approval be contingent upon receipt of and review by the Helena, Lewis and Clark County Heritage Tourism Council of a revised site plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments from the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. I see we jumped over an item due to my absence, so I think we'll go back to it if that's okay. A resolution creating Special Improvement Lighting District number three-nine-nine in the city of Helena, Montana. Madam Haulsho?
Thank you, Mayor. Also have Director Danielson and the city attorney are available for any questions you might have about this item. This resolution creates Special Improvement Lighting District number three-ninety-nine. This district had already been reviewed by the Commission, and it was brought forward again for review. The process did, was restarted, and notice was sent out in the community. And Director Danielson can provide more details on that process for you.
You have the floor, Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city manager. Yes, we sent out all the notifications again after the Commission approved the resolution of intention to reconsider this creation of this Special Improvement Lighting District. We received three public comments and nine official protests against the creation of this lighting district. I also reached out to Northwestern Energy because the Commission did have some questions about the cost of these lights. And their, Northwestern Energy's response is in the packet to the Commission. They did not specifically provide a matrix, which I believe is what the Commission requested as far as the cost of the lighting. However, they did provide an explanation of how the lighting costs are crafted and formulated in order to provide the city with what, what it costs to provide the infrastructure and the continued energy costs of the lighting. That is in the packet. At this time, I can be available for questions.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
This is just a clarification, because I thought I had saw it, I had seen it in here. But there, it's a hundred and five properties, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, okay. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe just a question, Ms. Danielson. So, we get these, the, the city gets these requests for a lighting district. How, how do we assess as Commissioners, right? When we get some protest letters that express incredulity at the costs and we see a differential of, I think there were some numbers quoted in there from either yourself or Mr. Spurgeon of what the different per, per square foot property cost? How does the Commission, how does your office analyze that to determine whether the rate is reasonable, whether it's necessary and proper for the running of the district? I mean, how do we make that call as a Commission for any given district like this one being created?
Commissioner, I'm, I guess I'm not understanding the question whether you're asking it of me or if you're asking it of the Commission?
Well, I guess it's both, right? I mean, the, the Commission has to approve it, and you all are recommending it. And I guess, how do we know? If we were told that the, we had to do nine hundred dollars a house, how would we know that that number is legit? We're being told we have to do... told we have to do 400 and change, right, or do two, two times it for one year? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand from the standpoint of someone who asked you, right, if, if an individual in this district is frustrated and says, how do people even decide to, to put this cost on me? And I say to them, well, Northwestern told me to. And I'm just curious whether the city has a metric for how your office determines that the number that we're doing is, is proper and correct for the residents, right? Because it's not Northwestern imposing it, we are. Does, does that make sense?
Yeah, yes, it does, Commissioner. I, I do evaluate this compared to the cost of other lights. We have a, a matrix in, in our office that we have to calculate the assessment every year on. And it all depends on, you know, there is no one average cost of a light per resident in the city of Helena, because the creation of the lighting district depends on many factors. It depends on the, the number of property owners. It depends on what the square footage of those properties are within the district. And it also depends upon the number of lights. We have lighting districts that, if you look back to the assessment that was passed, can, can range, you know, anywhere between, you know, .0012 per assessed square feet, value of square feet, to, to this particular one, which is on, on the higher end at .0612 cents per square feet. But it can vary, you know, from one end of the spectrum to the other, based on those, those factors that I mentioned.
If I may, Mayor?
Please.
As far as those rates are set, those rates are not set by the city, or are they set, Director Danielson? The question I had had for the city attorney just a minute ago was whether or not the, the city has a role in that, or if that's the Utilities Commission, and how that works. In a very broad sense, I understand that's the Utilities Commission in a broad sense, but the city does not assess those or analyze the rate structure itself that is being charged by the energy company. Is that correct?
Thank you, City Manager. No, the costs that are provided when we're establishing or creating a lighting district, or we're amending a lighting district to add more lights, that infrastructure cost and energy cost is analyzed and prepared by Northwestern Energy and provided to the city to create or amend the lighting district. Each their year after, however, the energy costs, the actual energy costs are reviewed by the city, and we establish the, the assessment every year based on the actual energy cost that the city has to pay.
Thank you.
Do you have any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
A follow-up question I have, and this goes back to the question I had asked for the item a few ago with the light that was removed, in terms of how we can improve our process. Would you all include in that, you know, a mechanism to make sure that something, I, I know it's not our fault, the city's fault, that it fell through the cracks 20 years ago, but is there a mechanism that we can utilize so that, you know, I mean, I completely understand why some property owners are, you know, and that some of the protests have said, no one said anything to me 20 years ago when I purchased this property, and, you know, I didn't know this was going to be happening. And I, you know, totally understand that. And I'm, I'm wondering how we can maybe help make sure this doesn't happen in the future for others.
City Manager, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean. Yeah, we, we are looking at our procedures for this. The, the city is at, right now, when any lighting district is created or amended, people are petitioning the city, and we're merely processing that petition, and then as the taxing authority for the city, able to assess the costs. When I first got here to the city, I was like, well, why isn't Northwestern Energy doing this? That's their lights, why is the city? It's because they don't have the taxing authority to do this. I did talk to the Community Development Director at one point, and asked, you know, if, if it was in their process when development comes through, if this is on their checklist. And it's not currently part of their, their processes to make sure that someone petitioned the city to create the light district. Those processes, though, can be, are currently being evaluated and reviewed, and, and that's part of my task, is to look at whether or not we can make improvements, so that something like this does not happen again. But with our current mechanisms, we're just waiting, the city just waits for somebody to petition us, and then we process it.
Well, just a follow-up comment. I know that, I mean, there are neighborhoods, 50 years ago, when below La Grande and University and all of that was getting developed, the neighborhood made a very specific decision that they did not want lights, and they wanted to preserve, you know, the dark space around Helena and the rest. And I think that that's, you know, we know that that was a very conscious decision. I don't think this was very, was a conscious decision of, you know, this development. And so I think if, yeah, figuring out how we can make sure that those checks and balances are in place moving forward would be excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Director Danielson, you've got someone behind you.
Mayor Collins, members of the commission, my name is Rick Edwards. I'm the Director of Community Connections at Northwestern Energy. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you today. With me, I do have Ms. Sarah Norcott. She's one of our corporate counsel. And then online, virtually, is Howard Sherfum, who's our Community Relations Manager. First and foremost, I want to say thank you for reconsidering this, the creation of this district. We, as a company, appreciate what you're doing, and, and I know your customers will as well. First of all, before I go through just a few very brief comments, I did want to respond to one of the comments that was made a second ago in regard to us not providing a matrix. That matrix was in the response that we provided. It was actually in the link that was provided within the response that Mr. Sherfum did send. So I would refer you to that. And if, if you do not find it, just let one of us know, and we'll gladly send that again. Just a couple things. From our company's perspective, we, we support the creation of this district, and we believe it's in the best interest of, of the residents within this district. Just a little bit of a recap that, that kind of goes along with what was said. There's, in this particular area, there's 105 property owners, 50 different lights. They're acorn style lights, so they're nice lights. As was mentioned, there were nine responses that came back, referred to as protests, but in reality, there were five protests. There were two that were informational kinds of responses, if you will, and then two others that we will resolve once we put in the LED lights. They were, they were more concerns in terms of brightness and things such as that. Once, once this is approved with your, with your permission, all the lights would match in that entire skeleton subdivision. As mentioned, these lights were, were put in back in 2003 or '04, and, and they were never built. And we'll take full ownership of that. We, in addition, are, are changing our procedures to make sure that this doesn't happen. But I will tell you that the, the ownership cost that's being considered for this particular district is based upon the original cost when, when those lights were installed. So back on the 2003, 2004 costs. So, so from that perspective, I think it's, it's favorable to your customers. Comparing that cost to one over in the Sandpiper area, where you recently approved that street lighting district, costs were a little bit higher. And, and again, it's just the timing in terms of materials, costs, labor, those sorts of things. So with that, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I, I would respectfully request approval of, of this particular street lighting district, and be available for any questions, as would Ms. Norcott or Mr. Sherfum.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions from the commission? Uh, just one.
Sure.
With the cost that you stated from 2003, 2004, how long would that cost remit?
Well, that, that's the cost that's actually used to create the ownership charge that, that they would be charged. So that charge stays in place until down the road at some point. If there was a, a general rate case filing, then, then that cost could be, could be subsequently modified. But again, it, it's reflective of all of the lighting plant, really across the, the system.
Thank you.
Yes.
Comments from the commission? Madam Clerk, any? Public comments?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Maybe a question for Mr. Edwards. Just tell me about Northwestern's, like, public outreach, communications with the property owners in approaching the petition in this case, before it petitioned the city.
In this particular case?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Halliday, to my knowledge, we did not reach out to any of the, the property owners ourselves. I believe that was, the, the outreach occurred through the letter process that was initiated through the city. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner?
Any other comments from the commission? Do you have any public comments?
Thank you, sir.
Uh, you may even want to stay if we have comments. Any? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I do not have any hands raised at this time. I did, however, receive one written public comment from Sondagab. Was a survey taken of these 105 households to add to this light district. They've been acknowledged in the public record.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just a comment before we, there's a motion revote. I do think that this is a lesson learned, item, and I'm really excited about all the work that Director Danielson and the city manager have discussed about how we can really improve this process. I see, I mean, we only, we had eight and a half percent of the district protest this. But, which, I'm, I'm glad that we got that feedback, but I, I do really want to make sure that we use this as kind of a case study of how to improve our systems moving forward, to make sure that, you know, folks are not caught off guard 20 years later, because I am, I am empathetic to, you know, what that does for folks. But also understand that, you know, over 90% of the district has not protested this.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I have a, a comment too, but happy for you to get a motion first, and then I can comment.
No, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I appreciate the information, and I think, you know, we're certainly not looking at a 50% protest rate, but a pretty significant number of folks that have reached out. To my knowledge, I don't know if we've received emails and support. Perhaps we've received one, but I, I'm not aware of anyone proactively saying, yes, they want this. My biggest concern is the, the increase to, to property taxes for these individuals. $400 increase in property taxes in the first year is, is quite significant for these homeowners. And while I appreciate the materials that were included in our packet, I am still left with a lot of uncertainty as to how, how this cost is, is calculated by Northwestern. We just lack a lot of the information on exactly how it's calculated. And given the concerns we've heard from homeowners, I, I continue to, to, to be concerned with this. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other?
And Mr. Mayor, just a comment from me as well. You know, I echo what Commissioner Loughlin has just said. This is an anomalous situation, right, because most of these, if not all of these, come up with a developer like we just did with Mountain View Meadows Amendment, and we've done with a number of Mountain View Meadow amendments, where in many cases, the developer is still the sole owner of the property. They're petitioning for it, they're opting in. Or we get a situation where a group of property owners petition the city, right? We have a majority group of individuals saying, we want lights in this district, and we're going to take on the costs. So this, this is probably unique. Highly unlikely you're ever going to see a situation like this again. The, the, probably process-wise, in retrospect, the best way to approach this would have been to go back and say to the property owners, you know, exactly what Northwestern told us. If you don't want this, you don't want to pay for it, we're going to take the lights out, right? But have that conversation with the community, because some people don't want the lights. Some people do. Some people protesting it just don't want to pay for it, but they want the lights. And we, that conversation has never happened, because we are getting the, the strangest petition that I've ever seen, which is an outside entity corporation coming in and saying, we want to make a district on top of a group of people, who if they can't get to a 50% protest rate, tough nuggets, we'll still get our rate of, rate of return on running these lights. So really, the best way would have been, right, instead of the five of us imposing it top-down on these folks, Northwestern should lay some groundwork, gone out and talked to these people, gotten the actual support for this thing, because who knows if 50% of this district doesn't want these lights. But now they don't have a choice. We're sticking them with a tax bill increase. So it's a little disappointing that we're doing it that way, given the unique circumstances here, and how we could have done this with a much healthier, public and transparent process.
Madam, uh, Manager Haulshock, one question. How many outreach letters did we send the, the neighborhood?
Thank you, Mayor. I can also have Director Danielson validate what I understand to be the case, which is with the first round, this letter detailing the petition was provided. And then, again, on the second round, this was, was shared now. I do believe there was some content specific to the point that Commissioner Halliday had just made, and I'll turn that over to Director Danielson to answer.
Thank you, City Manager. Yes, the, the second letter, the first, both the first and second letter did indicate that should the light district not be approved, that Northwestern Energy may consider coming in and removing the lights. In the second letter, I did make a point to bold that out, and to call it to the attention of the property owner, that that would be a consideration. So I did revise the letter to bold that, that note out, that that, that could be a possible consequence of not approving the special improvement lighting district. The notices, the letters went out to all of the property owners in the district. So each property owner got a notice that this public hearing was going to happen tonight.
And during the first letter, did we have any protests?
There were, I'm trying to recall, I think there were seven. Yes, there were seven protests in the first round of notices to property owners. And in the second round, there are nine protests and three public comments.
Are those, do you think they're the same protests from the first and second?
Some of them were the same, yes.
Do you have any other comments from the commission? Okay, did we do public comments? Yes, we did. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Would move to approve a resolution creating special improvement lighting district number 399 in the city of Helena, Montana.
Has been moved and seconded. Do we have any finer, finer comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
No.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Nay.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries three to two. The motion carries three to two.
Thank you. A resolution specifying the assessment option for the street maintenance improvement district number one for fiscal year 2022 and levy and assess all properties within the district. Madam Holschalk.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing associated with the adoption of street assessments for this year's fiscal year. It is the last item of adoption. As you're aware, we had an information that was brought forward originally within the team, and we have completed an analysis, again, of the street assessment. We are not recommending an increase in the street assessments for this fiscal year. We did complete an additional analysis as requested by Commissioner Halliday. Again, the analysis revealed even greater problems with our method of adoption as has been the practice in the last several years. And one of those is the carryover request, and that was what I was sharing last year. Carryover, because it was adopted in a previous year's budget, wasn't necessarily reflected in a final adopted budget by the city. That's been the case since the fiscal year 2017, so the adoption in 2016 of the fiscal year 2017 budget. And then, since then, has removed the final end-of-year revenues as well as the carryover. Those two data sets, actually those dollar amounts, have a significant impact on actual capital improvement projects budgeting. And we're very glad to be implementing some of the fiscal stability requirements, including the use of Capital Improvements Plan that tracks year-over-year projects that may have accumulated, and the dollars aren't necessarily showing within preliminary budget. So, again, this item adopts the street assessments for the fiscal year. We are not approving, or requesting any increases, and open for any questions that you may have. And also, Director Danielson is here. Should you have further?
Thank you. Any comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no hands raised. I have no written public comment online. There appears to be no one in chambers to make public comment on this item.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the street maintenance improvements district number one for fiscal year 2022 and levy and assess all properties within the district. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments from the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay. This is just, the next item is for, is public communications. We're not acting on this. The following letter was included in the public packet as part of the permanent record as per Mr. Sandrock. Request he be made part of the public record. The letter was submitted. At this time, do we have any member of the public who wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands. I have no written public comment. And it appears no one here is here to make public comment in chambers.
Do we have any final comments from the Commission? Without further ado, this meeting is adjourned.